Flag.
Almighty God, we have a high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and an understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
Alderman Gidge.
Yeah.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Woman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Woman Malizzi Gola.
Present.
Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman McCarthy.
Present.
We have fifteen members present.
Also present, Mayor James Donches and Corporation Council, Stephen Bolton. Does the mayor wish to address the board?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first, the budget is, of course, on the agenda. Uh, would you, of course, held it last meeting to see if we could learn more about the revaluation and its effect, uh, the, whether we're going to get better information than we think out of the, uh, commercial sector. Uh, but I think after, uh, the president and the budget committee chair met with KRT, I believe they will tell you that KRT cannot really provide any more specific information than we already have until late July or early August. I think, therefore, in order to enact a budget before the end of the fiscal year, so we can start out next year with a budget in place, so that we can close the books and, uh, begin working on the surplus and any escrows, uh, I would, uh, I would ask you to consider passing the budget tonight. Uh, there are a few adjustments made by the budget committee, which I think all make sense. The budget, as you know, is a very tight budget, up 1.6%, uh, which we're trying to be as careful as possible in view of the, the, uh, effect which we are concerned that the state-ordered revaluation may have. And, uh, therefore, uh, by passing this budget, I think we help to mitigate or lessen the impact of the revaluation on residential property taxpayers as much as we possibly can. But there's a few other things, Mr. President, that I wanted to mention on the agenda. First, R eighteen fifty, which is a resolution that will fully fund the Canal Bridge project. This is a project that has been in the works for quite some time. We are getting close to $500,000 of TAP grant, or federal funds, to create, uh, a, uh, connection between the rail trail and Mine Falls Park, a down Everett Street, uh, with a, with a pedestrian bridge over the canal into Mine Falls Park. Uh, the, the bids came in a little higher than we had hoped. We got, we're getting some more money from the, the, the state, their federal funds, and we need to match that. So this resolution would complete, uh, the funding of the project, so that we can move forward with our bids and, uh, hopefully complete it by the end of the year. And it will provide better access to one of our inner-city neighborhoods, that being the tree streets into Mine Falls Park, which will be, uh, I think, good for the neighborhood and good for Mine Falls Park both. R eighteen forty-two is the contract with a nano brewery. They're, they want to move forward with a brewery in the Bay Area of the Fourteen Court Street Firehouse, where the, where the fire trucks and truck fire wagons used to be. Uh, in addition to the lease that this would authorize, they are borrowing $150,000 from the federally funded community, or revolving loan fund, to make improvements to the building, which would, of course, be, if they're not successful, would be left with the city, uh, as a result of the fact that there are fixtures to the building. So, uh, they are considerably improving the building, and for the first time in decades, we will actually activate the, the bays of the fire station. You have already appropriated community development block grant money to do some improvements to the, to the doors, to the, to the windows going in, to make that look a lot better. And, uh, so I think, working together with them, we can really, uh, improve the use of the fire station, and hopefully, uh, after a couple of other things go forward, we can really, uh, activate the building in a way that it hasn't been used in a long, long time. And it, of course, is a very beautiful building, and I think it can come out, uh, really as a, as a, as a wonderful asset for the city when everything is finished. I wanted to mention something that is on your agenda, Mr., or, excuse me, that is not on your agenda, that's on the desk, establishing an expendable trust fund to accept donations for city events. Uh, this, I was hoping you would simply accept under a suspension of the rules and then refer to committee for normal process. Uh, this really is related to the Pride Festival, which is coming up on Saturday, the Pride Parade and the Pride Festival. Uh, the, right now, we have no mechanism with which to accept sponsorships and donations to city events. Uh, and so there's a very complicated mechanism. In this case, I think, um, the United Way is holding the funds as a, uh, as a, as a proxy for GAD, and, you know, we've, we've collected, um, sponsorships. This way, the city could collect, could, could, could accept sponsorships directly, and it would, money could go into a community loan fund. And we could carry this over and apply it to other events. Uh, in this case, the, the question has come up of what is the Pride Festival, Pride Parade going to cost the city? The answer is about $450. The, uh, we will need, uh, a detail at the park for about four hours, and that's, that's the out-of-pocket cost. And the funds we've collected, uh, once they go into this expendable trust fund, if you authorize it, would be used off that, that cost. Uh, but we have collected so far about $2,000 in sponsorships, uh, and, um, therefore, there could be funds left over, which could fund this account and be used towards next year's Pride Parade or Festival or some other community event. So I hope you will, uh, accept that, and, of course, we'll make a full presentation at whatever committee, uh, it's referred to, and, um, uh, we can discuss it more fully there. Uh, finally, Mr. President, I think some good news related to the police department. Uh, they've, the police department has gotten some funds to help us with the fight against, uh, drug dealing, the, the opioid crisis. Uh, first, they got a grant in the amount of $231,000 from the state in the form of the Granite Hammer or Granite Shield grant to, to help pay for overtime. Uh, number two, through the, uh, civil forfeiture procedure that is run by the federal government, uh, we hit a little bit of a windfall, in the sense that, uh, the city was in, the city police department was involved in a drug bust that yielded a lot of money, a couple of million dollars of, uh, I think, cash and other assets. And, so, the police department is going to be getting $291,000 of forfeiture funds, which are used to fund undercover operations, uh, some of the, the buys, the undercover vehicles, and even some of the overtime. Uh, so this, these both are really good news, and will help with our, our police department, who, which, who are doing an extremely good job in making a lot of drug arrests and, uh, keeping, uh, as much as is humanly possible, uh, the supply of illegal drugs outside of Nashville. So, uh, with those, uh, items, uh, Mr. President, thank you very much, and I will conclude.
Any responses to the remarks of the mayor? Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading of the minutes of the previous meeting. If there are no objections, the minutes of the Board of Alderman meeting of June twelfth, two thousand and eighteen will be accepted, placed on file, and the reading will be suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons?
Communication from Patricia DiPietro, City Clerk, relative to Fire Commissioner resignation.
If there are no objections, the communication will be accepted and placed on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. With one speaker, Mr. Roach.
Good evening. My name is John Roach. I live at Twelve Minute View Circle. I've come to make kind of a last-ditch, uh, request on the budget. Uh, in particular, I'm asking you to please consider adding $224,000 to the bottom line of the mayor's school budget. Uh, in particular, uh, this would fund two ELL teachers at $100,000 and six, excuse me, eight kindergarten pairs at $114,000. I realize you can only add the money to the bottom line, but I recently exchanged emails with Mrs. Odin, who's the president of the board, and she assures me that this is a very high priority, not only for the administration, but for many members of the board. So, should you add this, I can pretty much assure you that they won't spend the money buying pencils. I realize that the budget is tight. I realize that they have a rookie superintendent. I realize that sometimes they struggle to make simple decisions. I realize we spend an awful lot of money on pensions. And I realize also that we have a big, huge construction project in the, coming up in the near future. But the truth of the matter is, none of that is the kids' fault. We have a tremendous opportunity here to help our kids, some of the most vulnerable residents of this town, and I ask you to please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications requiring final approval?
There are none.
Petitions?
Petition for a street acceptance pine in Central Streets.
If there are no objections, the petition will be accepted, referred to the Committee on Infrastructure, and a public hearing scheduled for Wednesday, July twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, at seven PM in the Aldermanic Chamber.
Petition for street discontinuance, portion of Connet Road.
If there are no objections, the petition will be accepted, referred to the Committee on Infrastructure and the Nashville City Planning Board, and scheduled a public hearing for Wednesday, July twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, at seven PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. Nominations, appointments, and elections?
There are none.
Reports of committees. If there are no objections, the report of the Special Budget Review Committee of June twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen, will be accepted and placed on file. And if there are no objections, the report of the Finance Committee of June twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, will be accepted and placed on file. If there are no objections, the report of the Human Affairs Committee of June eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, will be accepted and placed on file. And if there are no objections, the report of the Planning and Economic Development Committee of June nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, will be accepted and placed on file. If there are no objections, the rules will be so far suspended as to allow for an oral report of the Budget Committee meeting held June twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, regarding Resolution R eighteen oh fifty-one. Mr. Dow, Alderman Dowd?
Yes. The one that was considered last night and passed unanimously, R eighteen oh fifty-one, is relative to the transfer of $20,000 from the Department of One Eighty-One Community Development to the Department One Eighty-Six Transportation, for the purpose of transferring additional matching grant funds to rehabilitate the Nashville Transit Center. The Transit Center has some issues that need to be taken care of. Uh, there's a time crunch on this, and that's why we're doing it this way, because we want to have the opportunity to get the matching funds, so that, uh, we're only putting in half of the money to, to upgrade the transfer station. So Director Marshan asked me if we would, um, take this under special consideration this evening.
That's it?
That's it.
Confirmation of the mayor's appointments?
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Third reading of Resolution eighteen dash zero one nine amended, relative to the adoption of the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen proposed budget for the City of Nashville General Enterprise and Special Revenue Funds.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R eighteen oh nineteen, as amended by roll call. Would you like to speak to it?
Motion is for final passage as amended by roll call. You will recall that at our previous meeting, we had amended it to match what came out of the Budget Committee. Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, that's sort of what I was going to say. It's already been amended with the changes that the mayor suggested, and were talked about in his comments. So, the, uh, resolution as it stands now is the amended one. It's the, the final one, and, uh, uh, as we discussed, that, uh, we're hoping that we can approve that tonight, so that, uh, we'll be set to go for the first of July.
And further discussion? Alder Woman Wiltshire?
Thank you. Um, I'll, I'll be supporting the budget tonight. However, I do, um, I do understand the speaker that came before us, looking for more funding for teachers and pairs for the school district. While I would support that if it were a different year, um, we have the revaluation, that we don't know what kind of effect that's going to have on our taxpayers, and so adding that much money to this budget, I can't see, uh, my way to do that. So I plan to support the budget as amended tonight. Thank you.
Alderman, please.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to thank, uh, Mr. Roach for coming up and speaking publicly. Um, I've had some concerns throughout the budget process about some of the departments maybe having to speak a certain way or present in public, um, what their needs were, and I've been pretty vocal about it. I had concerns about the city welfare, um, assistance reductions. Um, I think Alderman Kelly made a pretty good argument for needing to, you know, address, um, shortcomings, more needs, uh, in our school district. Ultimately, I have those misgivings through the, the budget process. Alderman at-large, um, McCarthy and Alderman, um, Dowd were pretty persuasive, and I'm deferring to their experience, but I am asking the board to be conscious that we're moving this budget forward in a pretty austere nature, when there are needs and there were specific programs targeting vulnerable people, um, that we made certain decisions about, while we've made other financial decisions in other departments and in other areas. And to just be conscious that if we do have problems that start to present themselves, I think we owe it to consider them and make tough decisions if necessary. All that being said, um, again, Alderman McCarthy and Alderman Dowd were pretty clear that devaluation is a significant risk. They've been through this and seen it before, um, and I agree with their, their caution that we need to be very careful this year. Um, and I appreciate the budget that the mayor has prepared.
Further discussion? Alder Woman Kelly?
Thank you. Um, I'll be supporting the budget as well. I, I did bring up the, uh, the same things that Mr. Roach brought up, and I think that he brings some really valid points. Um, and I think that what Tom, um, is talking about, are, is very important that we continue to look at as the years, as the year goes on. I hope that once we get those numbers in, we can look at things and see where we can help, because I agree, we are definitely putting some of the most marginalized students at a disadvantage, so, thank you.
Alder Woman Cle.
Yes, thank you. I, too, am going to support the budget, um, as it's going forward. I recently had, um, some town hall meetings with some of my constituents, and they're concerned about the taxes going up, and that was basically what convinced me. I had a number of people who told me, if they go up too high, they're going to have to sell, or they're going to have to leave. And that just, uh, spoke volume to me, so. Although I do think, in agreeance with, uh, Alder Woman Kelly and Alderman Lopez, I think we need to look forward to possibly having to, maybe next year, or even sometime this year, look at some of the things we've done. Thank you.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright?
I, too, support the budget, but I do have a concern, just as Alderman Kelly and Lopez concerned, is the same for me. Um, but I do hope that, once everything settles down and we look at where we stand with taxes, that if there's anything available, we will look at these two issues.
Further discussion? If not, would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alder Woman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alder Woman Malizzi Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
We have fifteen yeas, no nays.
Motion carries, and R eighteen nineteen is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution eighteen dash zero three nine, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $22,347 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Exotic Species Program, and authorizing the transfer of matching funds.
Alder Woman Wiltshire?
Thank you. I move for final passage of Resolution eighteen oh thirty-nine.
Motion is for final passage of R eighteen oh thirty-nine. Is there discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution eighteen dash zero four one, relative to the transfer of $65,000 from Department One Sixty-Two Street Lighting Account Five Four One Zero Electricity to Department One Ninety-One School Capital Improvement Accounts Eight One One Zero Zero School Deferred Maintenance.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R eighteen oh forty-one.
Motion is for final passage of R eighteen oh forty-one. Discussion? Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, um, as you know, the deferred maintenance account for the, uh, school department is, uh, woefully low compared to what they require. This money is to buy a piece of, of electronics for, to keep a school able to be open, so, um, it's very critical. Let's get past.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R eighteen forty-one is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution eighteen dash zero four two, authorizing the City of Nashville to enter into a lease agreement with Liquid Therapy LLC for Fourteen Court Street, Unit B.
Alder Woman Kelly?
I move for final passage of R eighteen oh forty-two.
Motion is for final passage of R eighteen forty-two. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R eighteen forty-two is adopted.
Second rea, reading of Resolution eighteen dash zero four three, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $190,800 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activities FY nineteen and FY twenty STD and HIV Prevention Grant.
Alder Woman Harriet Gathwright?
I move for final passage of R eighteen zero four three.
Motion is for final passage of R eighteen forty-three. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R eighteen forty-three is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution eighteen dash zero four four, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $130,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Services into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activities FY nineteen and FY twenty Immunization Program of Greaton, Nashville.
Alder Woman Cle?
I move for final passage of R eighteen dash zero four four.
Motion is for final passage of R eighteen forty-four. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R eighteen forty-four is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution eighteen dash zero four five, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $70,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activities FY nineteen and FY twenty Tuberculosis Program of Greaton, Nashville.
Alderman Lopez?
Um, I'd like to make a motion, uh, for final passage of R eighteen oh forty-five.
Motion is for final passage of R eighteen forty-five. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R eighteen forty-five is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution eighteen dash zero four six, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $41,243.50 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activity FY nineteen, Public Health Network Services.
Alderman Karen? Alder Woman Karen?
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R dash eighteen dash zero four six.
Motion is for final passage of R eighteen forty-six. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R eighteen forty-six is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution eighteen dash zero four seven, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $25,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activity FY nineteen Substance Misuse Services.
Alderman Tenza?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for final passage of R eighteen oh four seven.
Motion is for final passage of R eighteen forty-seven. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R eighteen forty-seven is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution eighteen dash zero four eight, authorizing, authorizing a sub-agreement between the Nashville Regional Planning Commission and City of Nashville, Nashville Transit Systems.
Alder Woman Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for final passage of R eighteen oh forty-eight.
Motion is for final passage of R eighteen forty-eight. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R eighteen forty-eight is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution eighteen dash zero four nine, authorizing the City of Nashville to enter into a contract with the Sehagen Valley Transportation Collaborative for Transit Services.
Alderman Gidge?
Yes, uh, thank you. I move for final passage on R dash eighteen dash zero four nine.
Motion is for final passage of R eighteen forty-nine. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R eighteen forty-nine is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution eighteen dash zero five zero, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of an additional $71,259 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Transportation, Transportation Alternative Program Funds, into Community Development Grant Activity, path into pedestrian bridge, and to authorize the transfer of matching and non-matching funds in the amount of $86,202.
Alderman Laws?
I move for final passage of R eighteen dash fifty.
Motion is for final passage of R eighteen fifty. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R eighteen fifty is adopted. If there are no objections, the rules will be so far suspended as to allow for a second reading of R eighteen fifty-one.
Second reading of Resolution eighteen dash zero five one, relative to the transfer of $20,000 from Department Number One Eighty-One Community Development into Department Number One Eighty-Six Transportation, for the purpose of transferring additional matching grant funds to rehabilitate the Nashville Transit Center.
Alderman Dowd?
I'd like to make a motion for fi, motion for final passage of R eighteen oh fifty-one.
Motion is for final passage of R eighteen fifty-one. Is there any discussion? Alderman Dowd?
Now, as, as explained before, this is to allow for a time-sensitive matching grant, so that, uh, the work can be done quickly on, on rehabi, rehabilitating the Nashville Transit Center.
Further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R eighteen fifty-one is adopted. Unfinished business ordinances?
Second reading of ordinance eighteen dash zero one zero, amendments to the Explosive Materials Code.
Alder Woman lawsigolia?
Yes, I would move to amend zero eighteen zero one zero in its entirety by replacing it with the blue copy placed on our desk this evening.
Motion is to amend oh eighteen ten in its entirety by replacing it with the blue copy placed on our desks this evening. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Alder Woman lawsigolia?
Yes, I would move for final passage of oh eighteen zero one zero.
Motion is for final passage of oh eighteen ten as amended. Is there any discussion? Alderman Jettie?
I'm assuming that this is the, uh, this contains the amendments that we approved, that the...
It's the amendments from the committee, plus, um, it was pointed out afterwards that we had put a mushy reference to some documents in there. The blue copy makes those, uh, accurate references.
It was pointed out by legal. It was realized that what we read at P E D C, legal hadn't had a chance to look at, and so, um, Attorney Clark came back, and, um, there was, there were references to the Performance Specifications for Blasting, and, um, it said shall comply with, and most recent ver- for blasting and it said shall comply with, and most recent version was added. So as I said, it's updated, that will be done. So that was under D five and six and under J additional prohibitions six, there was a reference to the blasting best practices and specifically to the one we had received and it was around the impact on surface or groundwater and that wording was changed to impact to surface or groundwater shall be controlled by using industry best practices because we can't attach something to an ordinance. And so anything that's amended will just refer to the best practices at the time. And again, those were the recommendations from Attorney Clark. And Director Marchand looked at those and was in agreement with that wording.
Okay. Alderman Dowd.
I'm glad that we went over the changes in the amendment because I'm sitting here in a former Alderman chassis chair and I was getting vibes from his memory that if we didn't explain the amendments that he'd have been concerned.
Alderman Lopez.
I appreciated the explanation too because I didn't get a blue copy, so you're a little left out.
Hi.
I already heard the explanation, surprise is gone.
Alderwoman Lizzie Golia.
Yeah, if I may, prior to taking the vote on this, I would just like to recognize the work of our Fire Marshal, Adam Pouliot, and Director Marchand and her staff, and then of course Attorney Clark in working through this and looking at what other communities are doing and getting feedback from developers and blasters in the greater New England area. And I know they spend a lot of time trying to get feedback and then putting it together and craft something that is in the best interest of the citizens in Nashua as well as working with the needs of developers in the city. So again, thank you for their work.
Motion is to amend with the blue copy, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Alderwoman Lizzie Golia.
Yes, I would move for final passage of oh eighteen ten as amended.
Motion is for final passage of oh eighteen ten as amended, is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and oh eighteen ten is adopted.
Second reading of ordinance eighteen dash zero one five, amending the city's stormwater management ordinances.
Alderwoman Lizzie Golia.
Yes, I would move to amend oh eighteen fifteen in its entirety by replacing it with the golden rod copy provided with the agenda.
Motion is to amend oh eighteen fifteen in its entirety by replacing it with the golden rod copy provided with the agenda, is there any discussion of that motion? Alderman Lopez.
The version attached to the agenda because I don't have a golden rod copy either.
Neither do I.
Mailman skipped my desk here.
Don't sit at the end, Alderman Lopez.
The amendment to this was by making, reducing impervious area by a minimum of twenty percent rather than originally it was ten. And we, this went to the planning board also and they were comfortable with that.
Any further discussion of the motion to amend? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderwoman Lizzie Golia.
Yes, I would move for final passage of oh eighteen fifteen as amended.
Motion is for final passage of oh eighteen fifteen as amended, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance oh eighteen fifteen is adopted. New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution eighteen dash zero five two, relative to amending the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan by amending Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter's use of funds.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Schmidt, Alderwoman Lizzie Golia, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderwoman Cle, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Gidge. And R eighteen fifty-two will be assigned to the Human Affairs Committee. If there are no objections, the rules will be so far suspended as to allow for the first reading of R eighteen fifty-three.
First reading of Resolution eighteen dash zero five three, establishing an expendable trust fund to accept donations for city events.
Additional sponsors? Alderwoman Wiltshire, Alderman Gidge, Alderwoman Harriet Gathright, Alderwoman Cle, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderwoman Schmidt, and Alderman O'Brien. And R eighteen fifty-three will be assigned to the Budget Review Committee. New business ordinances?
There are none.
Period for general public comment, no one has signed up. Remarks by members of the Board of Aldermen, I'll start over here today. Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President, I wanted to just remark about the Pride Parade, it is Saturday from two to five P M., it'll be starting at City Hall, going down to Water Street, and we will have a block party there until five o'clock. I want to make sure that I thank everyone who's made this happen, it's been a huge labor of love, the mayor's office has been involved, Kim Kleiner's been incredibly helpful, Patricia Piatzou has been helping incredible amount, we've been working with DPW and parking and it's just been everyone, all hands on deck to make this happen. It's going to be fun, but I kind of wish we didn't have to have it and I want to make sure that we talk about, it's going to be a celebration, but we also are having this for a reason. By way of example, I read an article today that fifty percent of people who are transgendered still don't feel comfortable coming out at work. So that's one of the many reasons that we're having this, this is about including everyone, making everyone feel safe and comfortable and proud of who they are. So, that said, it's going to be fantastic, there's T-shirts and lots of rainbows and I'm really looking forward to having our city come out strong for that.
Alderwoman Lizzie Golia.
I'm sorry, thank you, I just would like to recognize Craig Adams and thank him for his service on the Fire Commission and his service to the city and I know he'll be missed on the Fire Commission, thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
I think, I would like to respectfully suggest that we try to come up with some other way of making these wholesale amendments to proposed ordinances or resolutions other than these color-coded amendments. The, you know, a lot of us, a lot of us new people, when we came on the board, we were encouraged to, to use our laptops to look at agendas and discouraged from requesting paper copies, but our laptops are not color-coded, we have no, these, these golden rod copies and blue copies, et cetera, are not identified on our laptops and, and the public has no idea what we're talking about. So I don't know what the solution is, but I would, I would encourage us to think about some other way of, of doing that so that we, we, we all know, you know, what, what the amendments are. I felt the need, I remember before I became an Alderman, watching these meetings and hearing about golden rod copies and, and back then saying, thinking the same thing, what, what are they talking about? So I, I don't know what the solution is, but I'm sure that we have a lot of talent in this city, someone can make a suggestion on, on how to continue to make it easy to do these large amendments, but also bear in mind that finding a better way of identifying them.
I think we can actually get the intermediate text that has the changes in it with changes tracked posted in such a way that you can find it on the website, that would be the easiest way to accomplish that. Alderman Lopez.
So I agree with Alderman Jettie, and I think maybe that slight thunder we all heard was everybody who's ever been an Alderman agreeing because it seems to come up every year that you talk about the golden rod copy and then you're looking around in the agenda and you don't, it's not golden, so it's confusing. I also wanted to welcome everybody to the Pride Festival coming up, Pride Parade, and thank Bobby, the young man who also was responsible for, with Paul Shea raising the rainbow flag last year, for being one of the chief inspirations behind the planning for this. And then I also wanted to invite everybody on the Fourth of July, especially veterans, to a Fourth of July celebration at Riverside Barbecue, it's sponsored by a number of organizations, Positive Street Art, Veteran, the VFW, the American Legion, the Elks Club, and it's meant to kind of help make veterans feel a little more included, so it will be a free concert for veterans, it'll be a hot dog eating contest, I'm looking forward to being the number one contestant on behalf of the Board of Aldermen. It's going to be a good time, so all veterans are welcome, maybe it's an alternative to watching fireworks and that kind of stuff. And then finally, I wanted to express my condolences to the families, the family and teammates of Manuel Barbosa, he was a leading figure in helping form the soccer movement that we have in the community today, I think he's going to be deeply missed, but his legacy is being carried on by his sons, Jared and Hayden, who are both in their own ways great leaders in the community. Soccer isn't just a game, it has cultural roots, it's a way of positive self-expression and encourages people who are, you know, trying to find a way to, to be visible and be seen, to do it athletically, but also to study, to be part of the community, to volunteer, and I found the soccer programs over the years to be very, very much an asset to the community and I think a lot of that came from Mr. Barbosa's leadership.
Alderman Laws.
I just think it's worth mentioning that for the Pride Parade, if you're parked on Main Street between two and two-thirty P M. on Saturday, you're not going to be able to move your car until after the procession goes through. And you're not allowed to park in the Water Street parking lot and you're not allowed to park in the Renaissance parking lot from eight A M. to six P M. that day, just to avoid any...
Alderwoman Cle.
Yes, I'd like to also show my support with the Pride Parade and Festival, I plan on being there with my husband, I've been putting it all over my Facebook page, I'm very happy to celebrate all mankind and to show how equal we all are and I am proud to be there, thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, today I had the opportunity of attending the Chamber of Commerce State of the State with Governor Sununu, Alderman Lizzie Golia was there as well as the mayor, a lot of great things were said, but the one that I wanted to key on was they have allocated several million dollars to schools for safety allocations and we have applied for and are receiving some of those grants.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Just want to say thank you to city officials and to the community that came out last week to celebrate, celebrate Juneteenth, I was out of town, unable to be there, but I had so many wonderful things said about that evening and in terms of speakers and of watching video as well, so.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Thank you, I also want to thank all those who put the Pride Parade and Festival together, I'm looking forward to it, it should be an exciting time for downtown Nashua and for our citizens. I'd also like to mention something the mayor brought up earlier about the grants that the police department is getting, and I think the message that's getting out there to drug dealers, that Nashua is not a good place to sell drugs, so the more support they get, the more grants, the more funding they get to keep after this issue, I think it's great, so that's all, thank you.
I want to say thank you to GAD for the new farmer's market, I had the opportunity to go to the first one and it was quite impressive, I think it's going to become a great asset to the city and I would encourage everybody to get down on Main Street and go on Sundays. Committee announcements? Alderman Dowd.
Yes, the joint special is going to be this Thursday, has been canceled, the next one is July twenty-fifth, we may have one prior to that because the one order of business for the, for the meeting is to approve the request for solicitations for an architect and a contractor for the middle school projects, so stay tuned.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you, personnel is canceled for July since we have no nominations, thank you.
Alderwoman Lizzie Golia.
Yes, P E D C was originally scheduled for July seventeenth and it's not only in conflict with the home and event, but there is no business at this point, so I will not be rescheduling it for July.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, just to remind everybody, tomorrow night in the Automatic Chamber, starting at seven o'clock, will be a public hearing on the renumbering of impacting properties of three and seven Dawn Street, and immediately following that will be a meeting of the Infrastructure Committee and you're all are welcome.
Alderwoman Wiltshire.
I was just going to mention the special board meeting for the public hearing tomorrow night, thank you Alderman O'Brien.
Any other committee announcements? Alderwoman...
May, may I just make a comment, I thought about this as you were asking for committee announcements, the police last weekend really made a concerted effort to address the noise problem that I know many of us have heard about from outdoor diners and there were a, a large number of stops and I think in, in most cases, they, the people who are stopped were given warnings, but I know many people in the past eight or nine years have commented to me that they love being downtown, but they hate the noises, they're sitting outside dining, so I had a chance to thank the chief this afternoon, but I would like to also thank them again for finding the resources to do that.
Alderman Lopez.
There are other activities that happen downtown too, we just had our vigil, the longest day vigil for people that we've lost to recover, recovery and, I mean, some of our statements were punctuated by the roar of a herd of motorcycles, so I appreciate that we can find a balance between the two. I wanted to announce that the Subcenter Living Commissions Committee, Subcenter Livings Committee is going to be July twelfth here in the Automatic Chamber.
I did want to comment that Mr. Roach's comments regarding the budget, I think we need to be aware of and, and I just want the public to be aware that there are opportunities after we have seen what the impact is likely to be of the revow to perhaps make some adjustments and I look forward to seeing positive results when we're able to do that. Alderman Dowd.
Just one thing also along those lines, the, when we passed, passed the budget as of July first, the amount of money allocated to the school department gives, is given to them and they can spend it any way that they want to, so the items that we were talking about that they want are not cut per se, they were additional items that they were looking for, but they could still implement those by cutting something else, I know that's hard to find, but there is that possibility.
What's our motion? Alderwoman Wiltshire.
Vote to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we're adjourned at eight eighteen.